In accordance... Read the new one, or the...
No, the new one.
The new one.
Yeah, that'll be me.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 31, adequate notice of this regular meeting of Board of Adjustment and Attachment for Franklin has been provided.
Anthony Caldwell. Laura Grauman asked to be excused, she wasn't feeling well. Bruce McCracken.
Here.
Alan Rich.
Here.
Robert Shepherd.
Here.
Gary Rosenfeld asked to be excused. Joel Reese. Cheryl Bethia.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas.
Here. Regular meeting minutes, October 3, 2019. Is there a motion?
Move the minutes.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close. Regular meeting, October 17, 2019. Again, a motion?
Move the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Resolutions, Saba, Majic, ZBA 1900023. Do we have a motion?
Move.
And a second?
Okay. Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Okay. All right. Hearings, the trust under Article 6, Sigma Summer, 11 properties, ZBA 1900015. This applicant's requesting site plan approval for 50 townhouse units provided in nine separate buildings, 179 parking spaces at 31 Cirove Lane, Somerset, Block 468.09, Lot 34, in the R7 zone. The development has previously received a use variance approval. So this would be the site plan hearing. It's carried to December 19, 2019, without further notification. The one hearing for this evening, excuse me, Narindhat and Karen Cipressad, ZBA 1900026. Applicant seeking certification for pre-existing non-conforming use for two-family house at 104 South Lawrence Street, Somerset, Block 171.02, Lots 40 and 41, in the R7 zone. This was carried from October 17, 2019, without further notification. And, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lawrence Sax, on behalf of the applicants, Narindhat and Karen Cipressad. They are the owners of 104 South Lawrence. This is not your typical zoning board application. You probably have not seen too many of these. Usually you see use variances, you see bulk variances, you'll see site plan approvals. This is sort of a different creature. We're seeking relief under Section 68 of the municipal land use law, requesting a certificate of nonconformity for a property that, and you'll hear testimony to this, was constructed probably in the 1930s, 1936, to be exact, as a two-family structure, and has continued in that fashion up until today. But for the fact that my client received a violation last year regarding the zoning. So what he's seeking is to legitimize the two-family status of this property, which has really continued unabated for, you know, 80 years or so, all right? But in the wisdom of the zoning officer, for whatever reason, a violation was issued. But we have several witnesses here this evening. I have the owner of the property, Mr. Cipressad, who's owned the property since 2017. I have his next-door neighbor, Mr. Patricio Perez, who has lived next door to this property since 1963, and will tell you that during his entire period of ownership and his entire time being in Franklin Township, this was always a two-family residence. And finally, just to kind of tie up all the loose ends, I have a planner, Ms. Allison Coffin, who will provide you with the planning testimony. Now, this is a case that really is based on a lot of documentary evidence. So what I did is I made copies of all of the exhibits that we're going to refer to, and I've clipped them for you, and I'm going to have my client testify to that. So, Mr. Caneely, if I can hand those out?
Yes.
Just thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can have Mr. Cipressad sworn in?
Could you pick up the microphone with your left hand and raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Okay, holding the microphone really close, give us your name and address, please.
Narindhat Cipressad, 104 South Lawrence Avenue, Somerset.
Could you spell your last name, please?
You have to speak up. The Somerset, New Jersey part, I'm sure, just got lost on the tape. So, like me, speak loudly.
Okay.
Could you spell your last name, please? Thank you.
Mr. Cipressad, and again, keep that microphone as close to your mouth as possible so that it's all audible. You are the owner of 104 South Lawrence?
Yes.
And you acquired that property August 4 of 2017?
Yes.
Okay. And obviously, when you purchased this property, it was represented to you as being a two-family, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And you presently live in the downstairs apartment?
Yes.
And you have a tenant in the upstairs apartment?
Yes.
Okay. I want to show you what is marked as Exhibit A1.
Okay, before you do that, Mr. Caldwell has joined the board.
Thank you.
And I don't think you've hit any substantive testimony so far, since you haven't introduced the exhibits yet. So I believe he would be eligible.
I have not, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so Mr. Cipressad, I'm going to show you what's been marked A1. Now, A1 is a seller's disclosure statement, is that correct?
Correct.
And this was provided to you at the time you signed the contract?
Yes.
And it shows on here, and I think I circled it, I didn't circle dampness or basements, that was done by somebody else. But I circled 1936. That's the representation from the seller as to the age of the house when it was constructed?
Yes.
And that's what you were told when you signed the contract?
Correct.
All right, I'm going to show you what's been marked as A2. A2 is a Central Jersey Multiple Listing Exclusive Right to Sell Listing Agreement. This was also attached to the contract when you signed the contract for this property?
Yes.
And looking at page 2 of A2, it shows a representation, and I circled it, of this property being a two-to-four family.
Correct.
It's not a four-family, it's a two-family. All right. Going to show you what's been marked A3, which is the contract of sale between you and the sellers, Mr. and Mrs. Cap. And again, this was the contract you signed when you purchased the property?
Yes.
And I circled Paragraph 9 here, which is a standard clause. But this was a clause where the seller made representations regarding the zoning ordinances?
Yes.
And if you read through this, it states here that the seller represents that there are no violations of any zoning ordinances?
That's right.
All right. And then, I'm going to show you a letter addendum that was... You were represented by Mr. Francis when you purchased this property?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Francis sent a letter addendum to another attorney, Mr. Rothenberg. Now, in Paragraph 6 of that letter, again, we have the same representation that was contained in Paragraph 9 of the contract, is that correct?
Correct.
But more importantly, if we go to the last page of A4, we have also a representation in Paragraph 25, where it says here, seller represents that the property is a two-family home, that there is one unit that is currently occupied by tenants. The tenants are vacating on or before July 2, 2017. All security deposits have been returned, blah, 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 blah.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So it was your understanding that this was, from a contractual standpoint and from representations made by the seller, a two-family unit?
Yes.
You intended to occupy one of the units?
Yes.
And then, I'm assuming, did you intend to rent out the upstairs unit?
Yes.
And you have done so since you acquired the property?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to show you what's been marked A5. This is the loan application that you filled out when you purchased, when you applied for your mortgage. And again, I circled over here. It states here, number of units, two.
Two.
So that's what you represented to your mortgage company?
Yes.
All right. And I believe it also says on here that the house was built in 1930, right below that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And make sure you speak up so that we can get... Okay. Going to show you now what's been marked A6, which is a multiple listing agreement that was listed on the Middlesex and Somerset County MLS site. And on this, again, it's circled here that it's two units, correct?
Yes.
And also gives a description of what the two apartments have. For instance, Unit 1 has five rooms, with two bedrooms, a bathroom, and a kitchen, correct?
Yes.
And that's the apartment you live in now?
Yes.
And the second-floor apartment has, which is listed as Unit 2, three rooms, which is one bedroom, and one bath and one kitchen?
Yes.
Okay. A7, I'm going to show you, is a Realtor's description. And again, it also references the fact that 104 South Lawrence is a two-family.
Yes.
All right, A8 is an appraisal that was done in connection with you obtaining a mortgage. You remember having that done?
Yes.
All right, you remember seeing a copy of this appraisal?
Yes.
Now, again, I've circled some of the pertinent pages here. But if we look to the far left, it describes 104 South Lawrence as being a two-family, one-and-a-half stories, and constructed in 1930 and listed as a styled two-family. And then below that, a same description about the number of bedrooms, bathrooms, kitchen, et cetera.
Yes.
All right. I guess the last, the second page of A8 shows, again, the house being approximately 87 years old. I've circled that, and again, the same description of the apartments in the house?
Yes.
And again, on the last page of Page 8, the same description that it's a two-family at 104 South Lawrence.
Yes.
All right, A9 is just the mortgage that you signed. And as part of that mortgage, there was a rider that you signed, which was a multifamily rider?
Yes.
Okay. All right, A10 is a smoke det... I guess a fire inspection certificate the seller obtained and provided to your attorney when you closed title on this in 2017. And I guess the importance of this is that it's represented as being a two-family dwelling by the fire marshal, is that correct?
Yes.
And also talks about the fact that there are two fire extinguishers, two smoke detectors, two carbon monoxide detectors, and one for each apartment, correct?
Yes.
All right. And in reliance upon all this, you closed title. Next is A11, which is a tax card from the Franklin Township Tax Collector, or Tax Assessor, showing that there are two apartments here. And I've circled the number of rooms. Unit 1 has a living room, dining room, bathroom, bedroom, kitchen. Unit 2, which is the upstairs unit, some fewer rooms, but obviously the same description. And also shows it being built in 1930s.
Yes.
And I think the second page of A11 just shows a diagram of the front of the building, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, A12 is an affidavit that was provided to us by Mr. Cap, who was the seller of the property, who is, no longer lives in the area, but was willing to execute an affidavit. And Mr. Cipressad, just so the board is aware, and they can read it for themselves, but it states here that Mr. Cap purchased this property in September of 1986. At the time of his purchase, it was represented and utilized as a two-family residence. During the almost 30 years of ownership that he had on this property, or actually more than 30 years, it was continually utilized as a two-family residence. There were always separate tenants living in the first and second floor apartments. He also indicated no structural changes were made to the property. The two-family status has always been retained. He also states in here that he was under the impression that it was constructed in the 1930s or '40s, and was always utilized as such. And at the time that he purchased it, the closing documents that he was provided with showed that there were two separate tenants, and I'm going to go over those with you right now, or actually in a second. But I attached A13. Now, A13, you've seen this document before, correct?
Yes.
This is the rental registration that was on file when you purchased this property. And it shows there being two tenants in this apartment back in 2016?
Yes.
When Mr. Cap sold it to you? Okay. All right. A14 was a document that is Mr. Cap's mortgage from 1986, September 4 of 1986. And Page 2 of A14, again, shows also that he represented to his mortgage company that this was a two-family because he signed a multifamily rider. And I've circled that. And as well, he also signed an assignment of rents, which would obligate him to have the rent forwarded to his mortgage company in the event that he defaulted on the payments. And that would be normally emblematic of there being a multifamily residence with tenants.
Yes.
And then, A15 is the closing statement from when Mr. Cap purchased this property in 1986. And I think the significance here, and I've circled it, does this show that there were two tenants living in there in 1986, V.C. and Proventure? And that there was a rent adjustment of 173 and 300?
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Cap is telling the truth then, when he says, when he bought it, it was obviously a two-family unit? Okay. All right, we'll get to A16 in a second. Members of the board, I think you have a copy of a floor plan, which I think was submitted as part of the initial submission. And before I just go through the photographs, I just wanted Mr. Cipressad to just verify that this is the layout of his house. Now, Mr. Cipressad, you retained an architect who drew up these floor plans?
Yes.
He visited the site?
Yes.
Okay, so if we look to the left, this shows Apartment 1 and the common entrance into the house, correct?
Correct.
So, if you look in the... I guess where it says "common entrance", there's a little swinging door over there to the right. That's the main entrance into the vestibule, is that correct? And then to the right is a doorway that leads to the downstairs apartment?
Yes.
And then to the left is another doorway that where it says EXTG UP. That's the stairway that leads to the second apartment?
That's correct.
So you cannot access the second-floor apartment from inside the first-floor apartment?
No.
All right. And the only way you can access the second-floor apartment is from this stairway that leads into this common vestibule?
Yes.
All right. And then in terms of your apartment, you have a living room, a dining room, kitchen, and two bedrooms?
Yes.
And also, you have a mudroom in the back?
Yes.
Okay. And then in terms of the second-floor apartment, again, we're showing that same staircase going down, we have two bedrooms, a kitchen, and a bathroom?
Correct.
Okay. So this is an accurate depiction of your layout?
Yes.
All right, so what I'd like to do now is just look at the photographs of A16, which were photographs, I believe... I was, you were present when I took these photographs, were you not?
Yes.
All right, so the first photograph of A16 appears to show two water meters in the basement? Or electric meters?
Gas meters.
Gas meters, I'm sorry, gas meters in the basement. Okay. One for each unit?
Yes.
Okay. And they were there when you purchased the property?
Yes.
The second photograph shows two water heaters?
Yes.
The third photograph shows two furnaces?
Yes.
And then there's, I guess, a close-up of the furnace?
Yeah.
All right, the next photograph shows the two electrical panels?
Yes.
And I guess the inside of one electrical panel, and the inside of the second electrical panel?
Yes.
And I guess the inside of the, either the first or second electrical panel. And then another photograph of the electrical panels?
Yes.
Okay. The next photograph is a photograph looking from your backyard to the front of the house, is that correct?
That's correct.
Does your tenant have use of that backyard at all?
No.
All right, because the only access is either through that mudroom to get to the backyard?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the walkway that leads to your front of the... From the driveway to the front of the house?
Yes.
All right. All right, the next photograph's an important one. That shows the front of the house, looking from the street.
Correct.
So if we were to look at this, we see the four windows. And those four windows are where the vestibule is that you just testified to?
Yes.
And to the right of that... To the right of the four windows would be the entrance to the house?
Yes.
And then the two... The two doorways leading to the first apartment and second apartment would be inside?
Inside, yes.
All right. And we'll get to that in a second. Those are the two electrical meters from the outside, correct?
Yes.
That's a view of the mudroom access to the backyard?
Yes.
All right, now, if we look at the next photograph, we see where the wreath is. That's the entrance to your apartment?
Yes.
And the door to the left is the entrance to the second-floor apartment?
Yes.
And there's another photograph of that. All right, and that's a photograph looking at the common entrance door to the outside from inside the vestibule?
Yes.
And again, another photograph showing the vestibule? And I think you're standing there, if I'm not mistaken, next to the upstairs apartment door?
Yes.
That's a photograph of the bathroom upstairs?
Upstairs, yes.
That's a photograph of the kitchen upstairs?
Yes.
And that's a photograph of the stairwell and you walking down the stairs from the second-floor apartment?
Yes.
And there's another photograph showing the same thing, but without you standing there?
Correct.
Looking up to the second-floor apartment? In fact, when you walk up the stairway, there's a door there. And that door is locked?
Yes.
That's a security door for the second-floor tenant? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions. I know it was an intensive exhibit documentation, but I wanted to at least run through that. I do have two other witnesses, and certainly my client will entertain any questions if any board members have that.
Anything from the board?
I have one question, Mark. What caused the township to come and inspect this particular dwelling and issue a violation?
I don't recall exactly what prompted it. Typically, what happens is the township must have received some type of complaint. The complaint alleged that it was, that there was a conversion. And here, the applicant is here basically to, here to prove that it wasn't a conversion, that it was a two-family all along.
Okay. I was just wondering how they picked that house?
And when we have, so when we do have a violation like that, we do go through our records to see if we can find any evidence of a previous variance, or if somebody, a previous homeowner, had gone to the board for certification of pre-existing nonconforming use. We didn't see any evidence of anything in the township records, and we go back as far as we can. So the way to remedy that is then for them to come here and legitimize it. And, you know, sometimes these happen, you know, if the house was there since the '30s, and they can come here and prove to you that it was there prior to zoning, and that it stayed that way, you know, through today.
When did, I guess I got a question for you, Mark. When did zoning start? 54?
1958.
58.
Yeah, 58 under the Municipal Planning Act, so, yeah.
So I had a question. So, do you have, you have quite a few documents there. Do you have any, anything that demonstrates or is dated around that time?
I do, I have one witness who is going to testify right now.
Okay, because a lot of what we've seen has...
Right, it's from 1986 forward, I agree. Right, but I do have... Luckily, we have a next-door neighbor who has been there since 1963. And he's going to testify right now, if that's permissible, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Can you bring on the witness?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cipressad. Mr. Perez, if you can come on up?
Thank you.
Sir, could you take the microphone in your left hand and raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Patricio Perez, 36th Road Street, in the corner of South Lawrence.
Thank you, could you spell your last name, please?
P-R-Z.
Thank you.
Mr. Perez, you live next door to this property at 104 South Lawrence?
Yes.
And how long have you lived next door to this property?
56-plus years.
Since 1963? You bought that house in 1963?
Yes.
How old are you today, Mr. Perez, by the way?
Eighty-seven years old.
Okay, all right. So you were a young man when you bought this property, all right. All right, and when you purchased your house, which is next door to the Cipressad property at 104 South Lawrence, were you aware of the fact that this was a two-family house?
Yes.
And during your entire 56 years living at your property, has it ever changed from being a two-family use?
Never.
All right, so there's either always been people living on the first floor, living on the second floor, rented it out, tenants?
Yes.
And I think when I saw you on this, when I met with you previously, and I know you, it's very gracious of you to come down, you told me that what triggered your knowledge that this was a two-family is you instantaneously noted that there were two electric meters on that house?
Yes.
Because they're on your side of the house?
Yes.
All right, but you also just know from your knowledge of living there for 56 years, and you never moved away from this property, right? It's always been a two-family?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any further questions, so...
I thought you had a planner?
I do.
All right.
I have a planner, okay?
Anybody have anything, any questions for the...
I guess I have Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Over this way. Hello?
Yes.
Okay. In the neighborhood that you live in, is there anyone there who's as old as you?
No.
You were the oldest?
I'm the oldest. And if you know, Mr. Rossi, eh, lives across the street from me, he was there when I moved there.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
And?
Angelo.
Angelo Rossi, and, and is he still there?
He's still there.
Oh, okay, and he was there before you?
Yes, when I moved, when I moved there, he was there.
Okay, but he...
He's the only one left over there.
Oh, okay.
And me.
Yeah, and you, you and him. All right, and, but he didn't wanna come down? Mr. Rossi? I don't think his health is too good, yeah, he's, we, 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 uh, he's not able to even come down, but... All right. Yeah. But Mr. Perez, obviously, was, was more than gracious to, to assist us. Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Mr. Perez.
I just have one other question. Are, on that same block, are there other two-family, uh, homes, or is that the only one?
No.
Talk right into the microphone, hold the microphone close?
No, it, it's none. It's only that house, it's a two-family house.
In fact, uh, my planner's gonna testify now, but my planner had looked at some aerials going back to the nineteen thirties. Apparently, this was one of the original houses there, and then I guess the property had been subdivided later on, and many more houses were built, but this was one of the original houses in the neighborhood. Um, but anyway, she'll, she'll testify, so, thank you, Mr. Perez.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, so, so were, were these houses originally built as a single-family, family?
No, from what we can gather, this house was built at, has not changed, because, and by the way, we did an Oprah request with the municipality, and of course, and I'm sure Mr. Hilli will agree, I'm not gonna find records going... We don't find records even going back to nineteen fifty-eight, or even the early sixties for that matter, but certainly nothing from the time that it was constructed, but, um, you know, I think it's... there had been no structural changes to this property. It was never converted from a one-family to a two-family. You can just, just from the photographs, and if you look at the layout, it, it would have been impossible to do so, so...
Okay, it just seems out on the same block that it's the only...
It's the only one. Yeah, there are some two-families in the neighborhood. Uh, I believe there's one around the corner, I know Ms. Coffin can maybe testify to that, but, no, this is...
The only one.
The only one, yep.
Hello.
Hello, could you take that in your left hand and raise your right hand?
Before you swear me, are you gonna ask me how old I am?
No.
Okay, we're good.
He swore the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Now, if he does ask you, you have to give the, the right answer.
I can just always plead the fifth, though, right?
The first question, Ms. Coffin? Anyway, I know, I was joking. Yes, now, now I'll ask you. Ms. Coffin, if you can give the benefit of the board, your, uh, professional qualifications?
Hello, uh, my name's Allison. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've had my license and certification...
Think that's sufficient for tonight?
Excellent.
All right, so Ms. Coffin, I know that you've been retained to do an analysis of this application, and I know you've done a comprehensive review. If you can give the board the benefit of your analysis?
Sure. The applicant tonight is requesting a certificate for a pre-existing non-conforming use or structure, uh, for an existing two-family dwelling that's located on the site. The property in question is block one-seventy-one point O-two, lots forty and forty-one, also known as 104 South Lawrence Avenue. The approximately five-thousand-square-foot lot contains a residential structure that was built prior to nineteen thirty-one. The tax records show it at, uh, nineteen thirty. The structure contains two dwelling units, one on each floor, and access to the units is provided via separate doors within that shared enclosed vestibule. The property is located in the R-seven zone. Now, a two-family home is a permitted use in this district. There are only two permitted uses, single-family homes and two-family homes, but the existing lot does not conform to the minimum lot area requirement, uh, for this zone. For a single-family home, it's seven-thousand-five-hundred square feet, and for a two-family home, it's fifteen-thousand square feet. So that our, our pre-existing nonconformity relates to the lot size. Uh, we tried to review the history of the zoning and approvals for this property, and there is none available to us. I did review the aerial, to look at the history of development of the area. Um, a review showed that the earliest aerial I could find was nineteen thirty-one, and this home is present on the property. It's one of the very few homes and structures that are present in this area in the nineteen thirty-one aerial. The home appears to remain in place throughout the years. I say "appears" because it is very difficult sometimes to read some of those early aerials for the exact footprint of a structure, as the resolution can be very low. However, there is a structure in that location that does not move throughout the years. Uh, the neighborhood itself changes over time, but the existing density and lot sizes on this particular block, uh, were set and in place by nineteen fifty-three. So the lot size that we're looking at does predate the ordinance. Uh, the aerials, however, do not determine, uh, the use, only that the structure itself was there. We did an Oprah request with the town to look for a certificate of occupancies and building permits and tax records going back as far as was available, and that did not return much. I was hoping that it would allow me to either determine a point at which a conversion had taken place or that no conversion had taken place, but in the absence of any records being returned to us, I don't see, uh, any point where a conversion happened. Uh, we did look at the ordinance, which again dates to nineteen fifty-eight. The structure was located on the site prior to that date. The applicant can document this use as a two-family going back to nineteen sixty-three, which is fifty-six years, but there's no records available prior to sixty-three. But there is no evidence that we could find that this home was at any point converted. A visual inspection of the property did not reveal any obvious signs of conversions, so we have no reason to, to believe that this home was not constructed as a two-family in nineteen thirty. So, um, the applicant, in this case, has provided evidence of the use of the structure as a two-family home is its longstanding, as is the size of the lot itself, uh, which is a non-conforming condition that we're looking at, and this predates the township zoning code. There's no evidence to call this into question, and therefore, the board may grant this applicant's request for the certificate.
All right, Ms. Coffin, when you said you looked at the aerials from the nineteen fifties, and I guess the nineteen fifty aerial probably has more clarity than the nineteen thirty aerial, um, does it show the same footprint? In other words, it shows the house and it shows that vestibule in the front as well?
It shows the same shape of the house as what's present now. Nineteen thirty is a gray blob.
All right, but in nineteen fifty-three, it shows the exact same footprint?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions.
Uh, que... I, I have a question to our counsel. Uh, if, if, if this house was built in nineteen thirty-six, before our current zoning laws, wouldn't it be grandfathered, uh, in, in its current condition before we started?
If you believe that it was built as a two-family in the nineteen thirties, and it has been used reasonably constantly since then, that would predate the nineteen fifty-eight adoption of the resolutions, and you could vote in favor of a pre-existing nonconforming?
Okay, that's what I wanna know.
So, so, I, I had basically the same question. We don't have to have, because it's getting to the point now where we're up around sixty years, so to get some live testimony of people who were there before nineteen fifty-eight is getting a little difficult. So, we can listen to the evidence that they've presented and decide on our own, without having that direct evidence, whether or not that we can grant this pre-existing use?
It is usual in these types of cases that they will present some testimony about their observations of the construction methods. Uh, sometimes they'll even bring in a contractor who says, "Everything here is original."
Yeah.
Which means there, there wasn't an alteration later in time? Because later in time, you don't know when that was. Um, but i- i- it is usual in these, uh, types of applications to give some testimony about what they believe the state of the construction was. And if it was all original, and you believe it was constructed prior to nineteen fifty-eight, would vote in favor of the, the relief the applicant is seeking?
Okay.
Any other questions?